It's eight thirty-five. I'm going to go ahead and start the meeting. And Suzanne, if you could start by doing the roll call?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Patrick Brown.
Present.
Kim Gleason.
Present.
Tammy Colby. Lyle Jepson. Tom Lovett.
Present.
Gabrielle Lucci.
Here.
Jenna O'Farrell.
Present.
Rich Warner. Jennifer Samuelson.
Here. Good morning.
Amara Severton. Daniel French.
Morning.
Alrighty. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Okay, so hearing none, we'll move on to if there are any members of the public who wish to be heard. So as usual, we will leave this item open for several minutes and just kind of move on to the next items on our agenda. Which takes us to Item C, which is reviewing and approving the minutes of our February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting, if there is a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Great. It's been moved by Kim Gleason. Is there a second?
Seconded by Patrick.
Seconded by Patrick Brown. Any discussion? Oh, yes, Kim.
The links were not able to be accessed either on the documents that we received in our meeting attachment nor going directly to the website. So the links embedded within the minutes aren't clickable.
Okay, I hadn't checked them. Suzanne, is that something you can?
Yes, we can work to correct that.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Kim. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes of our February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. All those opposed, please say nay and raise your hand. Any abstentions? All right, we've approved the minutes. Thank you very much. Circling back, any members of the public? Hmm, okay. Board announcements, I've got a couple of quick ones. As I mentioned a little bit ago, Lyle had emailed to say that he's going to be running about an hour late. He had a prior commitment this morning. And Tammy, I think, is going to be joining as she can. So we'll take her when she comes. The other thing I just wanted to point out, and this is included in the agenda packet as a point of information. But if you recall, last month, we had granted conditional approval to Champlain Valley Christian School. And they were going to appear before our March meeting. This was going to be something that was going to be on our agenda. Since then, they have subsequently decided to withdraw their application for approval and to apply instead for status as a recognized independent school. So I've included that email exchange between Champlain Valley and the agency, as well as a letter from the agency's independent school consultant, indicating that the school will be considered as a recognized independent school within the meaning of sixteen VSA Section one sixty-six C for the current school year. So that's it for me. Are there any other board announcements? Kim?
I just wanted to follow up on that to just make sure I understand. We don't have any role in recognized, right? Like, we don't have to then say we approve the secretary's recommendation. With recognized, it's just AOE. And, okay, terrific.
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay. And then I'll ask again when we get to future agenda items. There are a few bills moving through the legislature that directly affect us, the roles and responsibilities rule. There's a compensation study and there are a few different versions of a bill related to public tuition. And I would like to see our board be able to just have an update and a discussion about any feedback we may have. To the extent that you end up being called, Jennifer, I think it would be important that we stay on top of those that are directly related to us especially.
Yeah, and so Kim and I talked about this a little bit earlier, just to kind of loop the rest of you all in. I've not been asked to testify in the last month, so I don't have an update on that regard or in that regard. I think with regard to the roles and responsibilities bill, none of this is law yet, so you know, until there's something for us to discuss, it's kind of hard to know what to discuss. And if we are called in to testify, I think to the extent that it's something substantive that would require a discussion with the board, then I think, you know, the better course of action is to warn a meeting around the issue of what we are being asked to testify on. And, you know, we do have our roles and responsibilities subcommittee that has been reconstituted. My plan with that in deference to the, I mean, there's a lot of work that board members are doing right now, and I don't want to sort of overtax everyone because the work we're doing is, you know, voluminous and really important. I think my thought was that, and I think I mentioned this in a meeting or two ago, that the roles and responsibilities subcommittee has been reconstituted. I'd like to get EQS out the door and start the public comment period or, you know, the official rulemaking process with that before the roles and responsibilities subcommittee starts to meet again, unless they are called in to testify, in which case, you know, they are already ready to go. So if there's something that they're asked to testify on, then they can warn a meeting, discuss it, and then provide the testimony.
Thanks, Jen. Respectfully, I do hope that we'll sort of add a legislative update during session that the time to impact before it becomes law is while it's moving through, and at least the roles and responsibilities seems relatively stable. The issue around public tuition seems to be a little more fluid. At least as I'm looking and seeing it. And if I think back to the work we did on Chapter eleven, that was a pretty engaged process that we were watching it as it was moving because it was going to directly impact our work. So I think we had anticipated EQS being able to be wrapped up sooner. And with or without a committee on roles and responsibilities, we may just want to have a standing during the legislative session, a standing opportunity to be updated on what's going on, whether or not we've been called to testify, because where it directly impacts us, we may want to offer feedback.
So board members, I mean, I'm happy to have, I mean, I'm I'm aware that we, you know, I don't want to stray too far down this line, but, you know, my thought is that we exist as an extension of the legislature. So, you know, we exist, you know, we're constrained by legislative intent. You know, our authority derives from the legislature. If we're called in to testify, then I think it makes sense to sort of discuss what would we be testifying about. But beyond that, it seems a little speculative to talk about things that you know, don't yet involve us. So I don't know if anyone else has an opinion on that. I see some nodding heads.
So I concur with you, Chair Samuelson. Because if we're not called in and we waste all this time preparing, then it doesn't make sense. So let's with and with the sparse numbers, I think it's best to just do things as necessary or as needed.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I think there's a lot of pieces to the legislation. So I think waiting maybe to see what work those pieces may have for the board. And I'm curious to see, Secretary French, if you have some thought around what the board would be more likely to be paying attention to for those those bills?
Yeah, I mean, specifically the issue of roles and responsibilities, I would, you know, just back up and I would agree with the chair that this should be warned as an agenda item for the board. Firstly, to have this conversation. Right now, we're sort of under board announcements and the public has an interest in this conversation. So I think it should be warned. But secondly, you know, I pledge to work with the board on this, so I have not been invited to testify on this topic. To my knowledge, it's not come up. So if we do testify, I'd like to do that together. So look forward to the subcommittee's work on that topic.
Thank you. And I wasn't suggesting that we were going to be able to have that update now. I'll mention it again as a request for future agenda, because I think it's a dynamic time. And I think given that we were a little light on having our quorum this morning, calling special meetings are hard, I know, for people's schedules if it were going to require. So just ongoing sort of what's out there that might impact us and where it lay, whether or not we have to testify would be helpful. So I'll just request again in future agenda items. Thanks.
All right. Any other board announcements? Great. Any members of the public? All right. Well, that brings us to our student report. I don't know if Amara is here with us this morning, but Gabrielle, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I don't think I have too much to report this month, aside from it seeming like this month has been a little bit more stressful for our student body, at least. I definitely think that attributes to coming back from February break. That was, the first week was a little bit of a transition period back, even though we only had like a week off, it was still sort of rough to come back, it seemed like for a lot of students. And of course, with the weather and with a lot of sickness going around, it's been a lot. But I think students are starting to get really excited for the spring, like the final push towards the end of the school year, spring sports and other events that we have during the spring season. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else to report.
So does your spring season start next week?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I was wondering if the spring season starts next week, as I'm looking out my window and, you know, we've got a couple feet of snow up your ground.
I know. I don't, I don't really know.
And I know that you do theater. So is there like a spring musical or play or anything like that?
Currently, we're considering whether or not we do a spring show, because right now we are actually working on a competitive one-act piece that will be heading to a festival, regional festival in a few weeks. So that's pretty exciting.
So is this like a school effort that you're writing a one-act piece?
So it's more of like an intent, since it is a competitive piece, it's more of an intensive work. So there's only a select few people that participate in that and end up taking it to the competition because it is so it is so like intensive to do.
And are you involved with that, or is that a different group?
No, I am. I am involved in that, yes.
All right. So when is the contest or competition?
The competition is April first.
Right. Well, maybe we should put it on our April meeting to have you report back to us how it went.
I will not be attending the festival personally because I'm just doing tech for this show, but I'm sure I'll hear all about it once all my friends get back from that. So that'll be great.
Awesome. Well, good luck to you guys.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments for Gabrielle?
Yeah, I was just going to ask you, Gabrielle, is this statewide or is it regional or how is this configured?
It seems like it's a regional festival, even though it's based out of St. Albans. So I was thinking it would have been states, but I guess it's regionals, according to my theater teacher. She's more of the, obviously, the guru on all that stuff more than me. So, yeah, I think it's regionals.
Okay. Well, good luck. I hope there's a cash award for the emerging winners.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Gabrielle? Okay, well, thank you, Gabrielle, and good luck. Suzanne, Amara is not here, is she?
No, she is not.
Okay, thank you. All right. So let me circle back one last time if there are any members of the public. All right. Hearing none, I'm going to move on to Item F, which is independent school attestations. And I think we have Mill Moore.
He hasn't joined the meeting just yet.
Okay. Well, actually, Kim, can I pop over to you and do an EQS committee update?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
So our committee is trying to close in on the end of our work together so that we can move a draft to you all for approval. We've met several times. At least once or probably twice now since our last meeting of the full board. I had thought that the current working draft had been added to the package for the board last week. I noticed it hadn't. So it is now there. It's not for our full review at this time, but it is a large document. So to the extent that you have it with an opportunity to review yourself and offer feedback, that would be great. Jen offered us some feedback that the committee will take up. We have had the opportunity to hear an executive session from our attorney and an overview of the document related to the few points in particular that, questions that had been generated out of the committee especially. We are targeting, it looks like, ideally, a May filing, which is not ideal in that we had hoped for a February filing. But recognizing the closing pieces of work to bring it to final from our committee, I think we are clear we won't make the April filing with ICAR. And to back that up so that the board might be able to anticipate timing, I believe that would have us needing to file in the beginning of May, like the first week. So we might anticipate that we're looking for a special meeting on this topic. In April, we have some travel dates for some of, for Tom is traveling, our attorney is traveling and unavailability. There are some times in April that our full complement would not be available. So I can't give you a date for when we'd be looking for a special meeting, but it will be somewhere in or around the April meeting, giving us ample time to be able to file for May. I really encourage, if you have time and opportunity, to take a look at where we stand in our current working draft. And want to offer us feedback, we would welcome it. Patrick or Tom, any? What else did I miss?
No, that was a good, high-level view of where we are. And we plan on meeting again this week. There's been, and we are trying to push it forward as quickly as we can and still do our due diligence. And as Kim said, I'll be traveling the last half of April, so the window for us to close this out is pretty short.
When is the May ICAR meeting?
It is May eighth. Yes, I believe it's May eighth, or that's the date by which we need to have the documents there. I tried to capture their schedule and I can't recall if the date I dropped in was the date we needed to get the documents to them, or if that was actually a meeting date. But it's early May. And so thinking about Tom's travel and the state board meeting and our attorney is traveling in the beginning of April. I, we are really hopeful, I think, to be able to bring our version to completion end of March, or at least be able to not be in need of our legal support, you know, directly in the beginning of April. And so I can't tell you whether we'd be looking to probably meet before the April meeting is what I'm picturing. Thinking about Tom's schedule especially, but there's still a bit of work for us to be doing before then. Right now, we have a meeting scheduled for Friday. Nothing like St. Patty's Day with our EQS committee. But we have a meeting in the afternoon on this Friday. And then I think Tammy and I will try and offer a couple of dates for the following week. I know she has some travel for work that may make it a little bit difficult. And I've got some complications next week as well. I'm sure others do, but I know we'll need to try and connect next week so that we can move this draft out of our committee and onto you all.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the committee. And and it is, have you left, these pieces get more difficult as those of us who've been through the rules process know, as you come in for the first version of landing. And to be clear, this is moving towards as final as we can get it before ICAR filing. There'll be public comment period open and hearings and feedback that we'll need to respond to before it's final. And we know that body of work can also take time. So we're looking forward to getting it as close to finished as we can.
All right. Yeah, it is a heavy lift. So I know you guys have spent a lot of time meeting and it's a very thoughtful, involved process. So thank you to the whole committee.
And I just wanted to add that the co-chairs, it's a small committee, but a big chunk of the work is scheduling all these busy folks on the committee. It's not an easy thing. And so especially Kim, I don't know if she sleeps at nights, but she has done a marvelous job finding a time, a chunk of time for everyone to meet. And I just want to acknowledge that to the rest of the board.
Thank you. And our committee has been as flexible as we can be around where we're trying to pigeonhole it. So nonetheless, we we have heard from many constituents through the process of our work with engagement. And so we are hopeful that we've heard the voices and incorporated those as we could in our work in such that perhaps the, you know, the work after may not be as voluminous, but I know these processes, that doesn't always work out exactly like that. So I appreciate us all sticking with it and continuing to plug away. It's important work. I know that the eighteen months of work that came before the state board receiving the recommendations from the Act One Working Group was also deeply engaged with communities most affected by this work. And so I'm grateful for that starting place, but understanding that for the state board to own these rules, because they are ours, there was a considerable body of work to make sure we had heard from all folks who would find themselves in with the responsibility of implementing and operationalizing these rules. And that's the body of work we've been doing for the last many months. We thought it'd go more quickly. We probably should have known better. Thanks, everybody.
Great. Thanks for the update, Kim. Okay, so let me circle back to Agenda Item F, if Mill Moore is with us now. I thought I saw him.
Yes, I just made him a presenter and enabled his mic.
Thank you. So Mill, I don't know if you're having some difficulties. Maybe you can drop something in the chat if you are, but I don't see or hear you. Suzanne, are you able to read the tea leaves on?
I, Mill does have full power now, so he does have camera and mic, according to what I can see here.
Okay. And Mill, if this isn't working, you're always welcome to call in as well. So I'm wondering, we can always circle back. The next thing we've got is the presentation by Vermont State Colleges, which should take about a half an hour. So Mill, if you can hear me, maybe, because I think I see that we've got the presenters here. Pat Gerwold, I'm sorry, Farwinder Reewall, Pat Moulton, Barry Hulse, and Jody Emerson. Are they all with us?
See. I am here, Pat Moulton. I don't see others. I know we, oh, there's Jody, and I believe Dr. Graywall thought we were on for nine fifteen. So he probably is just running a bit behind schedule. So nine-ten, I believe. So let me just drop him a note and indicate he could join anytime. And I know Barry Hulse was going to be joining us as well.
Okay. We'll see who's ready to go first.
I can give it a little bit of history first, but let me sure, we are on.
So while you're doing that, let me just say, Mill, more if you can hear me, we're going to do Agenda Item G now, and we're going to circle back to you when they're done, which should be in approximately a half an hour.
Sorry. All thumbs this morning?
It's like Barry is here.
Well, if you would like, I could start things off with a little bit of a historical perspective, which I think is probably appropriate. Just first to introduce myself, I'm Pat Moulton. I'm currently the Executive Director of Workforce Development for the Vermont State Colleges. But I served as President of Vermont Technical College from fall of sixteen to this past July first, twenty twenty-two. So I was the President of Vermont Tech during the time that this legislation and the original study kicked off. So just a little bit of history, the legislature passed Act eighty in twenty nineteen, which asked Vermont Tech, Vermont Technical College, to examine the opportunity for VTC to offer fully accredited associate's degrees at regional technical centers. The study, and if the study found merit, there was funding provided in the legislation to pilot two programs that were intended to start in the fall of twenty twenty. The initial report was filed with this board and the House and Senate Committees of Jurisdiction on January twenty-third of twenty twenty. The report outlined a number of findings, challenges, and barriers. The report outlined a number of findings, challenges and barriers to move forward with a fully accredited, full associate's degree being offered at CTE. And some of those challenges included meeting VTC's accreditation requirements from the New England Commission of Higher Education related to. Degrees that teachers would possess as well as how many credits were delivered onsite, offsite, et cetera. Another challenge was just demographics in Vermont entirely with CTE centers facing some of the same enrollment challenges. That the state colleges and our institutions of higher ed are experiencing. Another was critical mass concerns, if there would be enough students who would like to avail themselves of this opportunity to make it cost effective. Then funding for both VTC to proceed with the pilots and how CTEs are funded. Creating challenges for school budgets and creating, um, enrollment challenges for CTEs. There was also timing concerns in terms of adequate time to work through some of these challenges and launch in the fall of twenty-one as originally intended. And the report recommended a bunch of roles and responsibilities for each entity involved that were needed to make this possible. And, uh, enable us to potentially do this. The original report used a portion of the $200,000 that was appropriated for the study and the pilots. But even today, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars of that remains. Um, I will say the report got very little attention after it was filed from any of the entities involved. And then in March of twenty twenty, the world changed and COVID was the top priority for everyone, especially in education across the globe. And I don't have to tell you how much fun that was living through. COVID demanded all of our attention at the state colleges. And then for the state colleges in particular, the need to change operations. Uh, as a result of financial concerns, and then ultimately the recommendation to unify. Uh, and transform three of the four higher education institutions within the Vermont State Colleges. To the single university that's still underway today. Also, key personnel involved in moving this whole idea forward either left the college or were called to move on to more pressing needs. And in November of twenty-one, Vermont approached, Vermont Tech approached the Committees of Jurisdiction to seek approval to use. The remaining funding to investigate not delivering the full associate's degree at CTE. Given some of those accreditation concerns, but to look to perhaps decentralize. One or two of our programs at the college to offer portions to high school students and adults in key critical, critical programs. At CTEs, the concept was really to use the CTE as labs. For VTC programming with remote delivery of the didactic portions of those, of the identified programs. With a lab tech onsite at CTE to assist with those labs. And this form of delivery could potentially be at multiple CTEs. And we had a general idea of some programs we wanted to consider. The legislature did provide that approval, um, in, in Act eighty-three in twenty-one, which amended the original bill from twenty nineteen. It enabled us to use the funding to study that opportunity and then potentially implement two pilots. But again, due to personnel changes, transformation work, changing roles within the state college, little work was done by VTC until this past summer. And fall, when Dr. Parwinder Graywall is our new president of the three merging institutions and will be President of Vermont State. Working with Barry Hulse of the Advanced Manufacturing Center at VTC, which is soon to be the Randolph Campus of Vermont State University. And he began working with Randall, with River Valley Tech Center and Central Vermont Tech Center on a health science and advanced manufacturing pathway. From CTE to Vermont State University. And Jody Emerson, who is here with us, Superintendent and Director of Central Vermont Career Center, became involved with Barry. And I recently jumped in to see how we can move this forward. This work is ongoing and I will let Dr. Graywall, um, bring you up to some of the present discussions and/or have, uh, Jody jump in. But the work seems to be, it is focused more on pathways. How can we start to earn some college credit while at CTE and then. Directly progress into that degree program or certificate program, um, as students, uh, learned more and as, um. As they were able to complete their studies in high school. So I don't know if Dr. Graywall is on yet. I don't see him, so might as well kick up, nope, I see you. Uh, no, are you on Parwinder? No, I don't see him. So perhaps Judy, you wanna, Jody, if you wanna take it over, describe where we are on the paramedicine program. Oh, and there's Dr. Graywall, so, um. Maybe we'll let you jump in, um, Dr. Graywall. I have given the sort of historical overview and brought folks up to. This past summer and fall, when you and Barry and Jody started working on both the, uh, advanced manufacturing pathway. And the paramedicine pathway. So I'll let you jump in and, uh, share what you would like with the board this morning.
Yeah, absolutely. Can you hear me? Okay. Yeah, great. Thank you. Thank you, Pat, for the historical, um, perspective on this whole thing. So I joined on July first last year. And this program came to my attention within my first two months that we need to deliver on this. And we started exploring, um, obviously we started with a manufacturing program. And had several meetings with faculty and we found out very quickly. Because of the high levels of math required expectations of the faculty. They had a lot of concerns in starting students that young. With, with these kinds of programs. But through conversations, we did, uh, reach some conclusions. Stating that there can be some students who are high achieving students who can make good progress through these programs. With that, we also started to think about, other than manufacturing, what else we can look at. And that's when the Health Sciences Program emerged to the top. And I still believe that there are other programs like agriculture, like, um. You know, a whole series of programs that CTEs offer, and we could be a good fit for, for them as well. So in the health sciences, this paramedicine program really is already. Is a collaborative project that Jody can further elaborate as to how it is working. Uh, but that's a great start in order to get students to. Win some courses that are university level courses while they are still in a CTE centers. Uh, we are further exploring the manufacturing piece as well. With advanced manufacturing, the new skills, new machines that we have. We are thinking that we could. Uh, bring in students and. Encourage them or inspire them to learn math in different ways. You know, use a different pedagogical approach by engaging them first in, in building something and then explaining how it, it has happened. So with, with that kind of approach, we might be able to even convince our faculty that we need to start. Getting some of these courses into the CTE. Programs. What I'm most excited about is our new approach that is in-person plus. Through which our faculty could actually offer or engage CTE students in the university classes. While they are teaching our university students, because quite often that's the issue as to how many students are there at a particular place. Would it be cost effective to offer a class to two, two, three students and such? But there could be two, three students on a number of CTE, uh, centers that can all join together. Into a class that faculty is teaching through one-to-one device. I'll let Jody talk about, a little bit about the, uh, health science area, the paramedicine program that she's working on. And, uh, I think there are opportunities in. Making progress towards some level of nursing degrees that could start. Or in, in general health sciences area where students can make significant progress while they are still at CTE or high schools.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Jody Emerson.
Want to answer any questions? Yeah.
Sorry. Are there questions or shall I go forward?
Uh, there, um, just a quick question, and I'm not sure I understood correctly, but, um, are CTE students in classes with regular. University students or was the idea that, um, they're able to sort of have their own remote class? I'm, I'm just curious.
So it can be done both ways depending upon how many students we have, right? It's not worth a faculty member teaching a class for just two, two, three students, you know, a small number. If we can bring students together into a reasonable class size. Then yes, it could be a class or a section just offered for CTE students. Otherwise, it will be better to be part of a university class.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I do have a quick question. This is Patrick Brown and, um. I almost said Commissioner Molton, you're so well suited to this position, given all your, um. Credentials in workforce development commissioner of the Department of Labor and the list goes on and on. My question is, um, you've mentioned pathways. Is there a pathway for new Americans who are working in different industry to develop their skills?
I'm, I'm glad you asked that question and, and that, those are also under development. There is work happening to really reach out to new Americans and try to see what we can do to integrate, integrate them into workforce development programs that are currently being offered. I know there's a tremendous amount of work happening in Brattleboro, uh, and I'm in touch with Adam Granold, who's the Regional Development Director there. But that is, is sort of in the starting stages. However, I can let Dr. Graywall explain. I know the university is very much open to enrolling new Americans and facilitating. How that can happen. I know recently there's been discussion about English as a second language as part of a barrier as well as technical English. Um, and I was just on the phone with, um, Adam the other day talking about potential funding sources for technical English. Once folks are hired into jobs, but, um, I know that that is a focus of Vermont State to try to be available to all learners and all Vermonters. And with a special consideration for how can we target new Americans and, and otherwise underserved Vermonters into these programs.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Graywall before we move on? All right.
Thank you. I'll start again. Um, my name is Jody Emerson. I'm the Superintendent Director at the Central Vermont Career Center. This is my second year in CTE. And I think that gives me a different history and perspective, so it was great to hear from Pat that history of that document that. I had shared with me earlier this year, one of my concerns. As I jumped into CTE and took part in the comprehensive local needs assessment for the first time last year. Was learning about the requirements of Perkins funding and the fact that all CTEs programs need to provide students with the opportunity. To either earn college credits or to earn industry recognized credentials, which all of our programs do have. And so that made me think more about what collaboration might we be able to do and. Knowing that the barrier is competition for funding and, and that, that's still going to be the case. Hopefully we can figure that out in the future. And so last year I started working with VTC and my emergency services instructor to see if we could do a level two emergency services program. Where students who had already earned that certificate of EMT could then work towards a paramedicine degree or certificate. And so we were able to send two students this year to the paramedicine program once a week up in Williston. They are here at the CTE in Barry every other day of the week, so they're working with our instructor. Who happens to be this year teaching both the first year and second year students, because we only have two second years. And, and they are basically piloting this model for us. Next year, we will separate and have two programs, an EMS one and an EMS two. And our instructor, who also instructs, my understanding is for VTC, um, will be moved to that EMS two to fully support the paramedicine program that the students will be in. So they'll still be with us four days a week and taking part in those paramedicine labs and classes online and in person once a week. And we can offer up a space for that if needed as well. So that was sort of the impetus for us in trying to move that forward. It, it gave me an idea of how we might create a pathway. Students in paramedicine are getting 12 credits a semester this year. And we are paying for that at the fast forward rate, so I'm paying it directly at a much, um, decreased tuition rate. And so that is going to be a, a problem moving forward if we have more and more students participating in that, because that's a cost that VTC. Or the Vermont State University couldn't continue to uphold with us, so we would need to be paying more for that. Um, students who've finished this will have one semester left, a summer semester of nine credits, so they get 12 credits in the fall. 12 credits in the spring and they'll have nine remaining. It's my belief that they will be much more successful in those remaining courses. Because they've had the support that they've had at my CTE center all year. And next year even more so for that group, because that instructor will be dedicated to that emergency services level two. My medical professions program has moved into providing the CCMA, which is a medical assisting certificate and a phlebotomy certificate. And so those students are already on a pathway that's setting them up for immediately getting a job in, um, uh, like a hospital locally. And so they are already on a path that can potentially bring them to the, um. Licensed nursing assistant program a little earlier than some other students. And so that's why health sciences made sense to me. Uh, Barry Hulse and I started talking in the fall. Um, I had, as I said, I had been shared the document about how VTC was, had this money to work on. Uh, collaborating with CTEs. And so Barry and I read it and started drafting some pathways that we, that he shared with, uh. President Graywell, and we were able to get some, just these drafts together from that. And so I'm really thankful that we're having these conversations and starting to move forward with this work.
I know Barry is on with us. If, uh, there's any questions you might have about the advanced manufacturing pathway.
Do a background if that works for folks.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so, uh, my name is Barry Hulse and I'm the Executive Director of the Vermont Manufacturing Collaborative. If you're not familiar with that, um, organization or what we do, I would definitely invite a future conversation, because it fits in so well with what we're doing. And I'd say that I really appreciated working with Jody as a thought partner in trying to figure out like, what are the possibilities here? Um, because there's so many potential benefits. Um, so as Jody said, we started out thinking about in the vision what. And so we thought about envisioning a school plus associate's degree plus industry, um, credentials. All wrapped up into a four, five-year, um, uh, type of program would do. And I worked really, really closely as, and others here with industry as well and Jay Sri, in, in understanding what are the workforce needs. Through college or not through college and, and trying to understand. And they see a program or a pipeline like this is incredibly valuable, uh, to Vermont. So that's the first part of the, the second part of the vision was understanding that Vermont has limited resources and that in each of the different places like CTEs and high schools and VTC. The core content knowledge, there's a possibility to share that, where we have a lot of people with really deep understanding and knowledge about a particular area. But that doesn't necessarily, you know, gain benefit for everybody across. Uh, you know, could a program like this also include a cohort of, of CTE kids that become a community and, and have it spread and utilize technology. For, for good to help this move. Um, so Jody and I met a few times and then we hosted a bigger session and we pulled together, uh, several different CTEs. I think it was Hartford, Springfield, U thirty-two, a couple others. And we started to, to go through that vision and then we worked through a bit of what is truly can you do from a curriculum feasibility? And when you start looking at engineering, you start realizing there is a lot of material that you'd really truly try to be crunch, crunching, um, down. The second would be logistics. How really could you get and move people? What skill sets do teachers have that would be able to cover? The second would be logistics. How really could you get and move people? What skill sets do teachers have that would be able to cover all of the needs of all the different classes in the program? You definitely agree it's a great idea. And we asked the question, why aren't we doing this right now? Because such a great idea was say, there are three kind of big hurdles that we have to figure out how to overcome to make that true. And the first one was touched on earlier about math and science. And as an engineer, a two-year or four-year, there's no way around that it's incredibly important and necessary that you gain foundational skill and knowledge of math and science to be able to be successful in the program in the future when you go to work. And you know what? We see the pipeline through whatever elementary, junior high, high school, CTE, you know, it's not always preparing folks knowledge background to be able to start taking some of the classes. So that was one of the hurdles, is understanding that there is a true need to help people learn and explore math and science in different ways. And I love Harwinder touched on that, is challenge that with the equipment and the technologies we have, the traditional way of blackboard math does not necessarily work for everybody, or maybe not even many. And it's really fundamentally thinking about how do you get people excited about what the end result can be, so that there's a great desire to actually want to learn the math and science behind the making things and the ideation. So the first one, math and science. The second one, Jody touched on, and that's the accreditation. So in the engineering space, and all of VTC, there's Nietzsche accredited, and very much necessary that classes that would count towards the associate or the full engineering that the quality of the instruction is at a place that that's needed, the knowledge and the background of the instructors, and then the content of the classes. There's a lot of overhead, but necessity of making sure that all of those pieces truly are delivering the quality. So that would necessarily, if some of the classes were taught back at the CTE, put some ownership on folks to go maybe get other learning and credentials that maybe isn't realized at you, is having all of the folks all to understand that there's another level to be able to truly do accreditation from all four or five of those years. Then the last one Jody touched on, too, is the funding. So there's this very awkward thing where if we're really two schools, two institutions overlap and provide this knowledge while we're accelerating the learning for students, that doesn't necessarily mean money that's coming from both directions to help both institutions. So really, kind of in the summary, those were the hurdles we found. We have some next steps, and we really think the first next big step is to make sure that in the engineering space, all the folks have a good understanding of what that accreditation would be, and that they're really on board in following through in that in both sides. So that's where we are in the next steps, if we are able to overcome that hurdle. And then we'll follow through with, how can we start building bridges for math and science? And then finally, is there a funding stream that can help this all together? But we're a little bit on a slower path than the, I'm glad the other path in the medical is moving really quickly. I think in the engineering space, we have some big hurdles. We're trying to figure out how to move.
Thank you. Lyle, I see your hand up.
Thanks. It's nice to see everyone. Sorry, I was late, and you may have already answered this question. But who's the point person now with the university system, so that all of the tech centers have the same information about what's available? Articulation agreements, how you can teach a course on campus at a CTE center, all that. Is there a particular point person, or is it faculty-specific?
Lyle, you caught us at the right time. We do have a point person for this area now at the Vermont State University. At the system level, you already heard from Pat Moulton, where she is the workforce development. At the system level, a go-to person. So any initial conversation occurs with that. That's a given. Once we get past that, then at Vermont State or at Community College of Vermont, we have, you know, each has a representative that will end up delivering that project. So I want to introduce our that person to this whole group today is Jay Butt. Jay Sri, could you introduce yourself?
She may need to be unmuted and enabled for her camera, but I know she's on here, so.
Thank you so much. Yes, I've been here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, sure.
Yes, it's such a pleasure to meet everyone through this Teams meeting this morning. I'm still in Texas. I haven't transitioned to Vermont yet. So I feel for you all with the snow that you all got. My name is Jay Sri Butt. I joined Vermont State University in December as the Associate Vice President for Workforce, Community, and Economic Development. So it's been very interesting the last couple of months. I've met with a lot of stakeholders internally, externally, and you know, CTE is of special interest to me, because I've worked with school districts very closely in the job that I had before, which was the Assistant Vice President for Professional and Workforce Development. And so I bring that understanding of the gaps that exist, you know, for students that are matriculating into college. And you know, Vermont State University, as you all know, the mission basically states that we are going to be graduating individuals that are work-ready and are responsible citizens. So we take that really seriously, and we want to be able to find ways to, you know, mitigate that gap and also find innovative solutions to some of the workforce development challenges that Vermont State is currently experiencing. So I'm here to work with you all, looking forward to, you know, finding ways to, you know, collaborate in the future as well. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions or comments?
Yes. So this is Patrick. So the end result for all of these students and the great work that you're doing is employment. What efforts are you making to connect with potential employers?
Well, I'm happy to take a stab at that. We have a very robust relationship with a lot of employers. Last count, from Vermont Tech, I think there was over 650 employers that we've interacted with in one shape or another. And also have a good relationship, I feel, with CTE directors, and in part through the Career and Technical Education Teacher Preparation Program that Jay Sri now oversees. And my work is out on the street, meeting with employers every day. And I can just tell you, every day, an email or a phone call comes in from employers saying, how can I access your students? And, you know, I will boast for a moment as the former president, but having a 99% placement rate from Vermont Tech, based on about an 85% return on survey, because we have a dog-on-a-bone career services director who hounds every graduate to find out what they're doing. And most of our students have at least one job offer, if not more, before they walk across the stage in May. So connecting students with employer partners and employers is not really a problem. We hold two career fairs. I believe VTSU is going to continue with those career fairs in the future. And hundreds of employers have contacted us, and there's typically more than 100 employers at these career fairs. The only governor on the size is space, and having enough space to host all those employers. So that's a relatively easy connection, I'd say. And and most of the programs, and Dr. Graywall can speak to this, but he's put huge emphasis on experiential learning for all the degree programs. And I believe that is another great opportunity to, as well as embedding certificates and industry-recognized credentials. So I can let Dr. Graywall elaborate on that.
Yeah, I think what Pat said is absolutely correct. The latest career services showcase that we had at VTAC, all these employers came in, the faculty have already told us all their students have already have job offers before they finish. So, but all these employers are looking at, and students can shop around to get a better offer from a different employer. So it is if you, if we all can facilitate more students coming through this pathway, they can start early, as we are now thinking about E-level, they'll have jobs. That's not an issue at all, especially with these fields that we are talking about. I talked to a number of employers at that event, and they are looking for, you know, more internship opportunities for these students. They said, I want formal arrangement, so that I can have every year a certain number of students. And it is we just need to pull a few more, excite a few more middle school students even to get on this pathway. And that finding a job is not an issue in this area.
Thank you. Jody, I saw you had something in the chat. I don't know if you want to just jump in.
Sure. I just wanted to say that our CTEs also have connections with industry partners. We have students in co-op. So they're going out into workplaces on a regular basis as seniors often. And for specifically the EMS 2 program that I was talking about, one of the two students is starting with Clear Choice this month as an EMT. And so she'll be putting to practice that certificate that she had. One of the barriers we run into in the health sciences is that students need to be 18 to participate in working at most of the hospitals and places. And the student just turned 18 and is now able to do that. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Graywall, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, building on this experiential learning that Pat mentioned earlier, Barry Halse actually worked with our faculty here at Vermont Tech and at Cassleton to develop a new 3D technology certificate that is open to any high school student or CTE student and to people outside the university. So that is focused on 3D printing, designing, you know, and highly relevant to manufacturing and health sciences and a whole number of fields, as you know. So that is a new thing that is coming up, very practically oriented, hands-on, that students can gain access to.
Kim, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you. I just, a clarification and then a question. The the collaborations we're talking about and the access to this programming is both for the K-12, or whatever, the 7-12 students and the adult learners, or is this specific to the high school students?
What we are discussing is specific to high school students that are part of CTE programs. I thought that that was the main focus of our discussion today.
No, of course, I just, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sometimes there are adult students in our CTE programs, so that it's possible. And some of the pathways would require that our sending schools collaborate with us to build some programming at the middle school level to support the student to be more advanced in math or science, for example.
And it would be wonderful if timing of delivery of some of these programs could enable adult participation. But as Jody said, there are adults who quite often enrolled in CTE programs. I know the Airframe and Power Plant Program that we're doing with Burlington Tech Center does have some adults in that program. So that could be done if scheduling enables. And I think that's the big question mark, so.
Thank you. I think I was thinking a little bit further through Patrick's earlier question regarding enabling new Americans to access these programs. And I was considering that to be primarily adult students, and how the outreach might make these programs something that that community would be made aware of, the ability to access.
And I would just add that when we undertake a workforce development-related program that oftentimes is for credit, and then those are opened up primarily to adults. So they are targeted at, either they're an incumbent worker or other adults who are looking for a career change. So it may not be the academic CTE program, but there are other opportunities for adults to gain credit through apprenticeship and other training programs. And that's where we really feel there are opportunities for new Americans and recent arrivals, and literally any adult that's looking to upgrade their skills, so.
I think it's great to talk about that extension. And while we've talked primarily here about the pathway to a degree, there are many, many people, for one reason or the other, the program isn't that path for them, but they still have really strong capabilities. And well past just the degree program, all of us here, Jay Sri and the CTEs and Pat work on programs that are accessible to everybody. It's helping any type of learner unemployment.
Barry, you've got some sort of microphone problem this morning, because you keep cutting out sometimes at key points.
I can start over. Maybe I was too far away. Is that better?
No, we got it. Overall, we did get it.
Okay.
But I would also, you know, as Dr. Graywall can explain, I mean, a pillar of Vermont State is more remote delivery, more opportunity to open up degree programs to non-traditional adults. That's the growth in population, unfortunately for us right now. But so that is a goal.
And if I may add, even non-credit opportunities, you know, if adults just want to learn some skills and get into some kind of job, because they already have maybe an undergraduate degree from another country, or whatever the case may be, we have opportunities for them as well. So Jay Sri's office will continue to offer even non-credit opportunities like that, that they can gain much more quickly.
Thanks so much for the clarification.
All right. So I think we probably need to leave it here. Although, this is really exciting. I think, and what I would love to do is have you guys come back in a year and just, you know, give us another update about where you are, how the programs are going. And I know these are pilot programs, so, you know, maybe there's you know, potential for expansion and, you know, just really, you know, check back in. But I thank you all, because I think you're really bridging an important gap, you know, between high school students, CTEs in college, and just continuing education. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you for having us.
Yes.
Thank you for your interest and for having us.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so I did see Mill briefly. I'm hoping that he, oh, there he is. All right. So Mill, we are going to circle back to item F on the agenda, which is the independent school attestations. So I think you have an update for us.
Yes, I do. Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. I apologize for not being connected with you a few minutes ago when I was scheduled. I had a Teams glitch at my end, but now everything's fine. At the outset, I'd like to mention to you that Vermont Independent Schools Association, for which I am the Executive Director, is speaking only for its 62 dues-paying members, member schools, all of which meet the association's requirement to be law-abiding organizations in every respect. Over the last few days, we've been collecting written affirmations of the Independent School Assurance Statement that is now required of all schools seeking approval or reapproval from the state board. And that is, as of this morning, we have affirmations from 21 schools. That includes both general education schools and the therapeutic schools. Some of those 62 schools do not need to respond, because they have recently signed affirmation statements as part of their reapproval applications, which are pending now at the agency or with you. I don't have that specific number. The affirmations have been coming in steadily. No member school has raised the slightest concern about providing one. And if you wish, I will provide a full list of all of our member schools for the record.
Thank you for the update. I think what would be helpful is, well, I think I'd like to invite you back next month for another update. But I think it would also be helpful to understand, you know, you mentioned the 21 schools, you mentioned another group of schools that have already done it. And I think it would be helpful to be able to track that data, and then
And then, you know, hopefully by next month, there will be, you know, many, many more students or schools, if not all of them, who will have completed the attestations.
I will be happy to do that.
Great. Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I would like to see that list, Mill. I think that's great. So if you could forward that to Jennifer. Maybe you could send that out to us, Jennifer.
Well, and actually, maybe what we can do is include what you have to date with the minutes. We can include a link with the minutes.
How about if I send it to Maureen or to Suzanne and they'll put it into the website and distribute it?
Sure. And again, I think it would be really helpful to also include the list of schools that have already signed it. If you can kind of compile that data as well.
Happy to do so.
Kim?
Just have a question of process. And thank you, Mill, for the update. How, how does this fit into the process? Was Visa charged with getting those attestations? Is the AOE charged with it? Are we charged with reviewing them? I'm understanding, Mill, to say his members' schools are 62. I'm suspecting there may be some currently approved independent schools that aren't members of Visa. So from a process standpoint, what is supposed, what is happening and what is supposed to happen? And by what point if this was regulation last May, I think?
What I'm doing, what we are doing is purely voluntary. We're doing this as an assurance to everybody involved in oversight of independent schools to demonstrate their compliance with the attestations. So if you need something more formal, that would be a task for the Agency of Education.
And Mill, you are submitting the attestations to the agency, correct?
Pardon me?
I said you are forwarding those attestations to the agency, correct?
Yes. Yes, I will be doing that. Yes.
I guess then maybe my question was, I think it was actually for Jennifer and Dan to understand what is the process broadly for the making sure we have attestation for all those approved schools for this part of the regulation that was effective last May?
So we, we wrote the rule, as you know, because you were very involved with it. And the rule does require compliance. I mean, the, the trick here is that, you know, the rule requires compliance. How do we track that down? I mean, I think the agency is tracking it down through its approval and initial approval and reapproval process. You know, the State Board of Ed doesn't have any enforcement mechanism. So Dan, I don't want to speak for you. I don't know if you have anything else to add to that.
Yeah, it reminds me of testimony I was asked on yesterday at House Ed. I sort of get to the gray area. As Jennifer mentioned, we have approval process that gives us authority and oversight. But we certainly, on a voluntary basis, could solicit that information from schools. I think, you know, as you saw a bit in our conversation about the quality assurance regulations that we're proposing for the public schools, we, we are featuring a mechanism in that process called assurance. And we're also featuring self-evaluation. So I think that would be a conversation for a future topic about to what extent we'd require that assurance on an ongoing basis or some mechanism to provide comfort that those things are being here too.
Can I follow up? Jen?
Yeah. Does anyone else have any questions? Just want to make sure. Yeah, Lyle?
I'm just confused with your answer, Dan. So my assumption was that we were sending out requests as the rule, the rule changed and people need to now have the attestation signed. And is someone keeping track of that at the Agency of Ed? Who is returning them and who is not returning them?
Yes, we'll have to figure that out. But the point I think Kim raises is not explicitly in the rule, I don't believe. The sort of a transitory process.
I guess if the, I think the effective date was clear to have been May of last year. I can't recall the exact date. Jennifer, you probably know. But the so I don't think anywhere in there, since that is effective as of last May, there was an assumption that if you had been approved and you have four years left, you don't have to comply or attest. So I guess I'm, I'm remaining confused, maybe in the same way Lyle is describing as to the mechanism for just ensuring that those that have been approved have, have attested to their compliance if they care to remain approved. I recognize that the impact of the tuition payment will change come July 1 for those who are approved to receive public tuition. But we, we have been through a cycle of tuition payments where the assumption would have been if they're approved, which is the only category until July 1. And receiving public tuition, they are in compliance with the rule that was in effect as of May of 2022. But in hearing that there may have been no mechanism for this, but for Mills voluntary work with the 62-member independent schools, I guess, can that be clarified? And then secondarily, Dan, are, how many independent schools beyond the 62 that are members of Visa are we paying tuition to?
Yeah, I couldn't follow your, your question, Kim.
Let me try again then, Dan. What is the process to have assured that those schools that are receiving public tuition approved? And that would have meant they're receiving public tuition are in compliance with the rules that were effective as of May of last year?
Yeah, really, our, our sole compliance, again, this is a very similar point, I think. Our sole compliance mechanism currently is the approval process.
So for five years, somebody was approved in.
Or if someone files a complaint, you know, that's another mechanism in the rule. But we don't have an ongoing surveillance mechanism, if you will, for lack of a better phrase.
So go ahead, Jennifer.
Well, but I, I think what I'm understanding, Dan, to say is when you testified yesterday, there, there is this discussion of having assurances that any independent school would have to submit on an annual basis. So that isn't law yet. So I think, you know, the agency can't require that yet. Am I correct, Dan?
Yeah, I mean, so that's the conversation. We, what we do is what's either in the law or the regulations, right? So your regulations don't require us to do anything more than the approval process. It's a good point. Certainly, I think, you know, Mills testimony, I, I view as being very cooperative and supportive of, on the part of independent schools to provide that assurance. And we can endeavor to create essentially a voluntary process to do that. But that's precisely what it would be, is a voluntary process.
Can I clear? Go ahead, if Jennifer, it looks.
Well, I'm just, I'm looking at the time. So I think, you know, maybe one more question and then I want to make sure that we have time for a very quick break because we start back up again at 10:00.
So then, if I'm the only one with my hand up. Jennifer, we worked, a lot of us, on those 2,200 rules with the expectation that those that were effective in May would be required of every school. And it would not be the luck of where they were in their approval process, but rather the category of approved independent schools, which was the only one that allows for payment of tuition, was inclusive of their meeting that requirement. Is that what you understood? That's certainly what I understood of our crafting of those rules.
And I mean, Tom was also on the subcommittee. I think the subcommittee was very clear on that point. I think the full board, you know, when we voted on it, was very clear on that point. So, you know, my, my only, you know, looking back, and you know, we've always talked about how we will reopen the 2,200 rule series after they've had a chance to go into effect because invariably there are going to be things that we didn't get quite right. I would say this is one of them. So I don't think I appreciate.
But if that was what we all understood.
There's no enforcement mechanism. I think that's, that's the problem. And that was something that at least I did not appreciate when we were drafting the rules. Like, we expect compliance. The question and what we've all been struggling over, you know, really since last May is how do you ensure that compliance? And so there's no mechanism in our rules, which I did not appreciate when we were drafting the rules. I thought, you know, saying that they became effective meant that they became effective. They do. They are effective. Every independent school should be complying with it. But how do you capture that information? That's the part that, you know, either it needs, well, I mean, I think in any event, it needs to be put into our rules when we reopen the series. But I think in the meantime, you know, this is something that may be fixed by the legislature, which would be then a statutory requirement.
But it seems if the intention was that that's effective May, if you want to remain approved, you need to complete the attestation. That doesn't seem ambiguous. It seems the process has failed, but not that there needed to have been something in law that was different. Our rules seem clear. The process seems lacking. And I'm concerned because I think we were concerned about approving schools and having them be covered outside of the requirements of the new rules. And I think similarly, we've got July 1 coming up. And if I'm not understanding even how that process is going to play out, if this is the example of how we are presuming something because they don't come up for approval for another two or five years. So I, I'm not seeing that there was ambiguity. I'm seeing there's a failure of process. And I don't, if that's our responsibility, I'd like for us to take that on if we expect that something of the agency. I just think it's not appropriate or fair that that falls on Visa for only their 62 members on a voluntary basis. That could not seem more inconsistent.
Jenna, then Lyle?
I'm going to suggest that we make this the future agenda items because I think the agency does have a mechanism to collect information on an ongoing basis. I think in the independent school approval process, schools have to resubmit when there's a change in faculty, a change in enrollment, change in financial capacity. So there's kind of ongoing contact that happens with independent schools in between the approval date and reapproval, renewal. I think this is the future agenda item that we can kind of learn more from the agency, what that contact looks like and maybe how this could be part of the process.
Thank you. Wow, did you?
Yeah, I'd like to echo exactly what Jenna just said right now. That this, we need to talk about this again because I'm concerned that we are now and will be making tuition payments to schools that do not have attestations.
All right. So let's leave it there. We're just going to do maybe a five-minute break. It's 9:58. So quick break if you need it, and then cameras off, microphones off, and I'll see you guys back here at 10:03. Like, we have a quorum so we can get back to business. And I guess when Connected Circles is ready, then we can go ahead and I guess postpone Agenda Item H and then move on to Agenda Item K.
I'm here and we are ready.
Great. All right. Well, thank you. Let me just, first of all, I appreciate your flexibility and the fact that you showed up early because we have a really long break right now, otherwise. So let me turn it over to Tom to talk about our special education approval this month.
Sure. Actually, our committee met and heard from the agency in Connected Circles about their application for initial approval for both general and special education. So both general and special education. And because it's initial approval, it is only for a term of two years. First, a little bit about Connected Circles, and then I'd like to comment on the process before making our motion, which will be to accept the Secretary's recommended action of granting initial approval to Connected Circles. Connected Circles is in Berlin. It's got excellent facilities, lots of outdoor space for their students. It is, as I said, providing general and special education for a maximum enrollment of 12 students. Then their goal is to get students back into their local schools as quickly as possible. They serve students from ages 12 to 22. Right now, because they're not approved in their, their facility, their site wasn't approved, they have six students that they're serving off-campus and six more in the queue. So they will, they will be at full enrollment with the waiting list relatively quickly. But they plan to ramp up that enrollment from, from the six to 12 in a deliberate and slow manner. They have a staff of 10. Four of them are teachers. Three of them are what they call connectors that provide that support for students and in the community. They will add more of those as they add more students. They have one clinical psychologist and then the owner also is on the faculty. Their board can be as many as five. Right now, they have three and they will be adding more as they move forward now that they have initial approval or will have initial approval after today. The agency staff who visited saw really strong staff, great staff, especially in their positive behavioral intervention and supports program. They're on solid financial footing. Their budget is 1.7 million. And they have a line of credit for cash flow issued for $50,000, up to $50,000. So it's a good school. We heard testimony from people and you've heard from Kelly. She's spoken before the owner about the, the need that they fill in the area. And both parents and counselors in the area have contacted me and our committee about the need for Connecting Circles to have this initial approval. The approval process is, worked really well, I think, the way that it should work with schools, with the agency and the schools, both working to make the best possible situation for students and families. The initial visit was in October, and there were some concerns by the agency about not having a social studies teacher or a credentialed social studies teacher, some staff development issues and that there are some accessibility issues in a certificate of occupancy, especially on that first floor of their, of their building. They received technical assistance after that October visit. And the school responded in January, showing that they now did have a certificate of occupancy and had addressed the accessibility issues. They got back in touch with the school further that they had hired a social studies teacher and had done the professional development of their staff to correct those issues as well. And so at our March meeting, we heard all this, plus a lengthy, a 20-plus document, page document from the school about all the actions that they had taken and their responses to the agency's report. So at our March meeting, we, we voted to move this forward and bring it to you. And so I'd like to make the following motion. And we can talk about it more. You can ask questions of Kelly or of me or of the committee after we make this motion and second it. So I'd like to move that the State Board of Education grants initial approval of general and special education. General and special education, school approval to a maximum of 12 students, ages 12 through 22 in disability categories of autism spectrum disorder, emotional disturbance, other health impairment, specific learning disability, intellectual disability, multiple disabilities, speech language impairment and traumatic brain injury to Connected Circles of Berlin, Vermont. This approval is for two years through June 2025. And it's conditional on the requirement that the school reports to the Agency of Education within five business days whenever any changes occur in enrollment, programs, policies, facilities, financial capacity, staffing or administration during the approval period. I'll just, and I'll just make, I'll just note that that was a little bit different than the green sheet you received in your packet in that it's not renewal, but it's initial approval. The, the, in the packet, it says renewal. It's actually initial approval.
Thank you, Tom. You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Seconded by?
Seconded by Lyle. Any discussion? Kim?
Thank you. I am appreciative of the follow-up process. And I am wondering what is? I am wondering what is what is the practical implication of this approval in categories of general ed and then very specific categories of special ed? Effective July one. So what, so I, we don't have a process yet for how July one approval to receive public tuition will be related to the ability to serve students with special needs. It's not categorical by the type of special need. And I'm also curious the, if some, if you could just clarify the general ed and specific special ed categories.
Right. So I think that as of July one, that approval for special category, for categories will go away. And Dan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that, but that will, that will go away because students um, will, um, in independent schools and the LEAs will work to serve whatever um, needs students have. And there will be a discussion about um, how best to serve a student that enrolls at an independent school. The um, so I don't know if that answers your question, Kim, for the first part. That, that, that now that, now that all independent schools will serve students on IEPs and the discussion will be um, best fit and how to serve an IEP. Then the categories, specific category, uh, special ed approval, I, um, goes away.
No, yes, I, I understood that to be true. I guess I'm trying to understand um, these. This is a program that'll be approved now, would likely be only able to receive tuition in the coming year. And the rules will change by July one. How do we?
Whatever.
How do we figure it out?
Yeah, whatever mechanism, whatever mechanism, um, uh, going back to your previous conversation, whatever mechanism that is. So for example, I'll just use Lyle's comment or as Jenna's comment. In the motion, you heard, um, it's conditional on the requirement that the school reports to the agency, education with any business days when any changes occur in a, in a number of categories. I have no doubt that Connected Circles will comply with the rule changes that happen on July one, twenty twenty-three. There's no doubt in my mind that they will. Right now, they comply with everything. If you look at their website, they signed the attestation. They comply with the rules as they are now in place. And I would say that if we, they would comply with the rules that will go into play, um, July first, twenty twenty-three. Whatever mechanism, either the agency or we decide, needs to be in place to get those attestations when the rules change. That's another agenda question. I don't think that that's, that's not something that we would affect their approval in the vote that we have in front of us now.
Yeah, no, thank you. And I, I am very appreciative of what appears to be the work they're doing and the, the need in their area, especially to be supporting students in the way they are. It really isn't that. It's more a matter of process. We deferred decision on others. We didn't have a complete application. This is different. This is a follow-up and I'm appreciative that this is different. And they've complied with those areas that needed addressing. I just am um, concerned about our continuing to approve schools without a process for how um, the July one change is going to be implemented.
But I think, Kim, that, that's a question for a different, I mean, that, that's not a question that's before us right now. I mean, the question right now is, you know, the, the motion that's been made. And I think, you know, to your point about July first, yes. And, you know, this is something that we've, we've already discussed in this meeting. So I think the, the better approach would be to warn this as a future agenda item and let the school, you know, let, let the motion that's on the table um, be voted on.
That, and I, I will vote to approve. I just wanna make a distinction. If we're gonna continue to be receiving requests to approve schools, we are, this is a follow-up from the fall and they've come into compliance with the areas of concern. I, I want us to a, approve them and I'm going to vote to approve them. I want to make clear though, any new request for approvals coming to us. We had talked at the last meeting about possibly taking up no more requests for approvals until there's a process come July one. I think Tammy had suggested perhaps we table future requests for approval until we know what the impact will be come July one.
So, Kim, I'm gonna stop you there, um, because that, that, that was a different conversation. Um, that was not a conversation that was um, part of the independent school approval discussion. So um, I think what we had discussed at our last meeting was that it was fair game to question any school that came before us for initial approval or reapproval that did not have special ed to ask them about what their plan was to be compliant with Act one seventy-three come July. I mean, fact of the matter is the school does have a special ed program, um, I think. So to, to that question, I think, you know, we've sort of satisfied what we had forecast in our um, February meeting. So any other questions or comments? All right, um, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the motion as read by Tom, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries. Um, thank you very much.
I just say and congratulate Kelly on the work you're doing with your staff and on behalf of the students that you'll be serving. Your patience and professionalism during this process is a model, so thank you very much. Showing up and continuing to say, we'd like to move this forward more quickly was perfect. You did that very politely and consistently, so thank you.
Thank you all. We're very excited to get kids here on campus to do the work that we're here to do.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, um. So now we're running significantly ahead of schedule, but this takes us to Agenda Item L, which is the election of officers. So um, by statute, this is something that occurs every two years in March. Things got a little bit goofy in this past cycle. Um, so when Tammy and I were elected in September, we were filling in positions that were filling in positions, so here we are. So we, I think it would make sense to begin with um, the election of the chair and then we will follow up with election of the vice chair. So with regard to election of the chair, is there a motion? Uh, Lyle?
I'd like to move Jennifer Sandelson for chair.
I'd like to second Jennifer Samuelson for her chair.
Thank you. Are there other nominations? Actually, should I be running this? Well, I guess that's a little bit tricky because Tammy isn't here. So um, does anyone have any problem with me running this part of the meeting?
No.
Okay. Um, are there any other nominations? All right, um, Suzanne, do you need to do a roll call on this?
I'm not certain, but I, I will most, I will do one if you would like one.
Sure, just to be safe.
Okay. Patrick Brown?
Agreed, yes.
Kim Gleason?
Yes.
Tammy Colby? Lyle Jepson?
Yes.
Tom Lovett?
Yes.
Gabrielle Lucci?
Yes.
Jenna O'Farrell?
Yes.
Rich Warner? And Chair Samuelson, will you be voting?
I think Hall of Stain.
Okay.
All right, uh, well, let me just take a pause here and um, thank you all. This has certainly been a, you know, real learning experience and it's, it's interesting. I was reflecting on this a couple of nights ago with my family. And it, like, every day, there's something new that I'm learning. And I think I feel really, really fortunate to be at this point in my life and have um, every part of my brain on fire. So I really love this work that I'm doing and I think what really makes it the most rewarding is to know that I think every single person on this board feels just as passionately as I do. And, you know, the thing that I love too is that we all come with different experiences and different perspectives and, you know, put two of us in a room and I think we come up with a better decision than any one of us would come up with on our own. So I thank you all for the work that you're doing. Thank you for your support in me. Thank you. With that, um, now we're gonna move to election of the vice chair. I would like to nominate Tammy Colby.
I'll second.
Great, um. Any other nominations? All right, um, Suzanne, I will ask again that you call the role um, for nominations for Tammy for vice chair.
Okay, Patrick Brown?
Yes.
Kim Gleason?
Yes.
Tammy Colby? Lyle Jepson?
Yes.
Tom Lovett?
Yes.
Gabrielle Lucci?
Yes.
Jenna O'Farrell?
Yes.
Rich Warner? Chair Samuelson, will you be voting?
Yes, and the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, I will be sure to let Tammy know what happened when she wasn't here. She had indicated to me that she was definitely willing to serve again, so um. Thank you, guys. Um, all right, so this takes us to future meeting planning. I know we've got a couple of potential agenda items that we've discussed in this meeting. The other thing that I've kind of wanted to um, put out there, um, before we get into the details for agenda items is, um, I know in this fall, we had discussed having in-person meetings, maybe in the spring and also in the fall. We're sort of at that point. And I know we also have two seniors, um, who are members of our board. So what I thought would be nice, um, and Maureen and Suzanne have been terrific in helping me sort of ferret out schedules and, um, you know, potential coordination. But what I would like to propose, if everyone agrees, is that in April, we go to um, the Central Vermont Career Center, which is Ameris School, um, and have our meeting in person there. The school is willing to host us. Um, and then in May, we would go to the Rutland High School, which is Gabrielle's school. Um, and they are also willing to host us. Kind of what I'm envisioning for both meetings would be tentatively, you know, meeting at like eleven o'clock to allow people to, you know, drive in the morning to arrive, meet at eleven o'clock, do a tour of the school, have lunch together as a board at the school and then start our meeting in the afternoon at one. And I think too, in deference to um, you know, sort of ease of planning this, it would probably be easier to um, have both meetings be in person and anyone who's not able to attend in person would have the call-in option. Um, and that would apply to both board members as well as members of the public, instead of trying to do a hybrid option. So, and then the other thing too, I will say, is both Gabrielle and Amera have indicated a willingness to um, sponsor or participate or host um, student discussions that can take part of our agenda, um, on, you know, a couple of different issues. So does that sound like a viable plan? See, thumbs up from Kim and Jenna. Patrick, do you have a question or are you raising your hand?
Yes, I, when you said April, I am not very hopeful thinking that we might yet have more snowstorms. The days like today, so.
That is true.
But Mother Nature will make that decision.
Yeah, definitely true. Um, Lyle?
I think it's a great idea and I know that you'll all enjoy the tour of the tech center there. I need to apologize in advance that my family and I are gonna be in Disney that day. So um, with probably half a million other people. So I apologize, but I know you're gonna have a great time.
So, and that actually raises a quite, a good point because Tom, I think you are also not gonna be available for our April meeting.
Right, I'll be in India.
Okay, so any, does anyone else know of in a, like, not being available for our, I just wanna make sure we have a forum.
Is there a Disney in India?
There is not. Separating eighteen teenagers.
Wow. Actually, sounds like a great experience.
What, what is my son?
Oh, wow. Wow. Okay, so I think let's go forward with that plan. I'm not hearing any objections. So we'll do April in person at um, CBCC and May in person at Rutland High. Okay, and then as far as items on the agenda, we are planning to have an update from Lincoln, um, because I know that they will have had the vote on their budget prior to our April meeting, so we asked them in February to come back and report back to us in April. So that will be one of the agenda items. And then to our earlier conversation, I think it would be helpful to have um, a presentation by the agency on providing guidance to independent schools to ensuring that the understanding of the changes to the Rule twenty-two hundred series that are mandated by Act one seventy-three, um, that will go into effect on July first, um, to ensure compliance. And then, Dan, if we could also sort of tack on um, any approved independent school that is not part of Visa. And I don't know if, if that's a you question, like if, if the agency has that information. But to talk about a mechanism for um, getting those attestations from all currently approved independent schools.
Yeah, we'll debrief a bit uh, based on this conversation and some of the questions we're getting and, and be prepared to talk about that next time.
Okay. Great. Um, and then the last thing that I remember, you know, from our current meeting is Kim's suggestion about um, discussing you know, bills that are before um, the General Assembly. I'm just gonna say again, my, my point or my thought is that, you know, the, the State Board of Ed does not make policy. We, we, we do what we were asked by the legislature. So I think if we were asked to come in and speak to an issue um, that deals with sort of the, the meat of something that's being considered, I think that would then inform what kind of board discussion we would have. But until that happens, um, it's kind of hard to know how to shape a discussion. Um, and I, to me, I, I feel like that's probably not a productive use of our time, but um, I am one of nine. So um, I'll open that up for conversation as to, I, I think the question is, you know, should that be included as an agenda item? Yes or no? Um, Kim?
Yes, I will advocate in the interest of keeping board members informed of what's moving that impacts our work. I would wish for, even as we do brief updates on where we are on rule development, that it would be a brief update on legislation that impacts our work. And if there is something of more substance for us to be responsive to, perhaps it gets more time on the agenda. But um, certainly historically, we've kept our um, ourselves engaged and informed as legislation that impacted us was moving through the legislature. Um, last year with Chapter eleven and then the year before with roles and responsibilities or maybe even a couple of years before that, um, in, in John's tenure and Oliver's tenure. So it's been past practice that we remain informed with what's coming through.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, I think we all have an, I mean, the ability to sort of track bills as they're coming through. So this, and I think individually, that's entirely appropriate. And I don't mean to be, I guess, let me open it up to other people, so I don't mean to be monopolizing the conversation here.
I, I always appreciated the, the quick uh, update that Dan used to give. And it was, I think it might have been a five-minute um, or ten-minute agenda item. simply because it saved me some work. Otherwise, I have to go digging all that through that myself, which I, which I'm happy to do, I guess. But I did appreciate his high-level updates.
And I think on the, the theme of past practice, you know, that, that I think left, was left over from a time when the Secretary or the Commissioner of Education reported to the board. So there was this tradition of commissioner reports or secretary reports as a regular agenda item and also legislative updates. But, you know, the, the role of the board is shifting as a result of the change. I don't, I don't, you know, our staff are full out doing their reporting to the governor's team. I don't also want to be reporting to the board relative to legislative process. I was thinking maybe something for the board to consider would be to receive the update from the School Boards Association. The School Boards Association does a regular update on legislative process and interprets what's going on. That might be a useful basis of your conversation to include that in your agenda packet. And, you know, because they, they parse through all kinds of things as opposed to having my staff think about, well, what would the State Board be interested in, you know?
Okay.
And I'm familiar with that report and it includes links. It's really a pretty comprehensive weekly look and it's very helpful. That may be completely adequate and it would offer the opportunity to reach out, Jen, if we see something that is particularly hot or of interest or where you're being asked to come in in a prospective way, to the extent that's possible during a legislative session, only because it is, you know, again, we're talking about April and making sure we have a quorum. Special meetings are hard and I'm sensitive to that as we think about the EQS work too. So I, I would, I appreciate that suggestion, Dan, that was something in my mind as well. That would be great.
Okay, awesome. To have other people, does that seem like a good balance?
Yeah, I wonder if Maureen or someone could send the link to all board members so that those that are not here could get the link so that we could all sign up for the newsletter. I assume there's a sign up for that. Yeah, we can, on your behalf, we can reach out to the School Boards Association and start that conversation with them.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
All right. Any other items for the April meeting? Okay. So we'll leave it there for now. Of course, things happen and I'm sure other things will be added to it. So, okay. Well, that takes us, unless there's anything else, to our public comment session. So hearing none, I'm going to entertain a motion that we adjourn our regular meeting. And that will be it for our regular monthly meeting today. Is there a motion? Jenna, I see your hand.
I can make motion to adjourn today's meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, seconded by Tom. All those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we stand in adjournment. Thank you.